The contractor, eight dollars per day, stays the same. So staff recommends adoption of an ordinance thereby updating Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 10.12, establishing a weekly parking pass, setting rates to include sales and use tax. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance thereby updating PMC, Chapter 10.12, updating PMC, Chapter 12, or 10.12, establishing a weekly parking pass, setting rates, including sales and use tax.
A second.
Motion a second, and just for clarification, how we came to the number that we came to on eight dollars was previously, it was five dollars plus the taxes, so you're being charged an odd dollar amount of roughly five sixty-five. And so the desire was to make it a round number that was inclusive of the tax, the taxes charged. So that's how it went up, two dollars and thirty-five cents. So it'll be a flat eight dollars when you put your card in and pay for it. And then the other items are also flat dollar amounts that include the tax. So I just wanted to clarify.
Is there a second?
There was a motion, and Mr. Kachardi made a second. So further discussion of this item?
Well, I just have a question. When was the last time that we updated our fees like this?
It goes, when we put the parking meters in, we increased the rates to help to offset the cost to pay for them, and I want to say five to seven years ago?
At least.
Maybe more.
And I think that's good context for the increase.
Yeah, and I will add on to, you guys saw the flyer, that I also created a letter that I attached to that. I had a whole stack of them printed, and I was headed out the door to put them on windshields down at the waterfront of the commuters, and the clerk and the police chief told me that I would be in violation of our code if I did that. So I did not do that. I had the best intentions to do that, but I did hand those stack of flyers to Mr. Clausen, who has assured me that they are on the ferry boat, explaining low or no-cost alternatives to commuters in our community, so they don't have to park on our waterfront.
We're actually making more to put on there, because...
They're gone?
Wonderful. And I would add just a couple of things. We at the transit did a survey to determine where the people that were parking there come from, and the vast majority of the folks, now I can't tell you whether they were there all day, or whether they were there for the hour that our person who went through there collected the information, but the vast majority of the folks that were parked there that particular day live mostly in the East Port Orchard, Parkwood area, not far at all. And I would also add that in addition, well, Matt's gone, in addition to Matt's comment about folks can park in a park and ride and ride the bus there, if they ride the ferries, there's no cost difference.
It's a pass?
It's just a matter of who they're paying. If they pay the bus driver, when they get on the bus, they ride the ferry at no additional cost, so they're either going to pay the ferry person or pay the bus, they're still paying the same rate that they would otherwise.
We have capacity in those park and ride lots, so there's free parking alternatives.
And we have a route that circulates through the Parkwood, East Bremerton area, that takes people directly down to the Annapolis boat as well, so.
Nice. Is that letter and flyer available on a website, maybe the city's and transit's, or both?
I thought we put it out there. I intended to, and I'm not positive that we did. I talked to Michelle, I thought I talked to Michelle about it, but we'll follow up on that. It will be.
Okay.
And I thought, I thought we talked about it anyway. Mr. Kachardi?
Just going to add to kind of what John was saying, is I think this process has helped us create some solutions in kind of a multifaceted approach. You know, we had some issues with people purchasing monthly passes, assuming that they've leased space for a month, and when there was no space, there was, you know, cause for concern. And with that, the type of sticker that gets printed out of there would be destroyed by hot sunny days, and you would not be able to read them, so it was another enforcement issue. And so moving to just having a max of weekly, not only solve that, but then it solves another issue, that when we do close down these parking areas, we're able to give people advance notice in time, whereas if they've purchased a pass the first of the month for a month, and they didn't realize that in week three it was going to be closed down for four days because of a festival or whatever event we may have, then they feel like they're at a disadvantage. And, to be frank, I think this is a move in the right direction for us, to continue to encourage these park and ride lots that we have that are not at capacity, to encourage, you know, mass transit, and really to take cars, you know, off of our most valuable real estate, and to have asphalt along our waterfront, is not something that I know we've all talked about that we enjoy, and I think this is a move in that direction. So this is not a money grab whatsoever. I think there's, we're solving a lot of issues here and looking towards the future.
Mr. Clausen?
I forgot one other thing. We're going to be announcing probably within a couple of weeks of some expansion to the route that we have that serves the west side of town, the McCormick Woods area, that we're going to be picking folks up there and taking them directly down to the ferry within, you know, a few weeks. So provides an option for anybody that lives out on that side of town as well.
What, and maybe I've just missed it here, but Mr. Martin, what's the effective date of this?
Five days after publication.
And as soon as we can program the machine, I was...
Yeah, so approximately the first week of August.
Okay.
Probably towards the end.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we're voting on the adoption of an ordinance thereby updating Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 10.12, updating Port Orchard Municipal Code Chapters 10.12, establishing a weekly parking pass, setting rates, including sales and use tax. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. We are on to Item 7D, adopting an ordinance, amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 10.14, residential parking permit system. Clerk Reinerson.
So at the November 24, 2015 council meeting, council adopted new provisions to the residential parking permit system that took effect January 1, 2016. Some council members had concern with the new code limiting three permits to each resident, and wondered if there should be allowed an appeal process to increase the limit, similar to pet licensing. In an effort not to hold up the new code, staff was directed to have the newly formed land use committee review the newly adopted code, focusing on the permit limit and determining if an appeal process is needed. At the January 11, 2016 land use committee, a few citizens presented some concerns with the new code and requested the committee look into them. The first concern was the ability to allow to permit if they reside at the home but do not own the vehicle. The other concern was the cost of a permit for each guest coming to an event hosted at a residence such as a baby shower, Tupperware party, et cetera. The committee discussed the public and the council's concerns. The committee recommends not requiring the resident to own the vehicle, rather show proof they reside there, and the ability to issue a guest event permit, change the limit of permits from three to four, and it was determined there is no need to have an appeal process for number of vehicles. Should the city receive high volumes of requests to allow more residents, or more per resident, the council would revisit the number then. Staff has provided a red line, or a strikeout in addition, red line version of the Port Orchard Municipal Code 10.14, reflecting discussions at the land use committee and comments presented by the public. In addition, updated language reflecting the change of the finance department issuing the permits and not the clerk's office. Staff recommends approving the ordinance as presented.
Clerk Clausen, or excuse me, Kachardi?
I move to adopt an ordinance, amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 10.14, residential parking permit system as presented.
Second.
Motion a second. Discussion of this ordinance? Seeing none, we'll be voting on adopting an ordinance, amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 10.14, residential parking permit system as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to Item 7E, approval of the mayor's appointments to the lodging tax advisory committee. Clerk Reinerson?
Yes. So pursuant to Port Orchard Municipal Code, 2.22, and state law, the city council shall review the membership of the lodging tax committee annually and make appropriate changes by recommendation of the mayor. The mayor is recommending a representative from the following organization, businesses to serve on the lodging tax committee upon council's acceptance. A business required to collect the tax would be the Comfort Inn, Cedar Cove Inn, and Mrs. Howe's Bed and Breakfast. An organization involved in the activities would be Sydney Museum and Arts Association, Port Orchard Bay Street Association, and Fathoms of Fun. The mayor recommends approving the appointment of members as presented.
Okay, your motion. Chang?
I move to approve the mayor's appointment of a representative for the Comfort Inn, Cedar Cove Inn, and Mrs. Howe's Bed and Breakfast as businesses required to collect the tax, and Sydney Museum and Arts Association, Port Orchard Bay Street Association, and Fathoms of Fun as organizations involved in activities to serve on the lodging tax advisory committee.
Second.
If I could speak to this for a moment, I did reach out to the VCB as one of the organizations, and they declined, so, because they hadn't served in a number of years, and it is my expectation that in the businesses that require the tax, that they do send their representative and not appoint someone that is a representative of a nonprofit to represent them. So is the expect, and that has been a practice in the past that we'd like to stay away from, so, so I just want to clarify that, that that is the expectation, that the business will represent themselves or have a representative there.
That is employed by the business?
Employed by the business, or has the business interests, you know, and not is, and is not one of our nonprofit potential recipients, which I think would be a conflict. So just clarifying there. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to add a thank you for that. I think it's so important, if we look back of where this came from, these are the businesses that are collecting the tax, they are charging their customers this tax, to be reinvested to help create more heads and beds, and to create this sustainable pile to help development. And so I think it's critical that these businesses that are effectively charging their customers absolutely play a role in the allocation of these funds, so they can help determine, you know, the financial benefits, and this doesn't get earmarked as it has in many, many communities across the state for projects that really are very adverse to those that are actually collecting the tax.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Corrigan?
I was just wondering, one of the organization, one of the businesses listed sometimes advertises as a VRBO, and how does that affect the lodging tax, VRBOs? Do we know?
I don't believe we collect it.
They don't? Okay, so is there a certain percentage that it must be rented out as?
I believe we're collecting the tax, it's, some of that tax, or they wouldn't be eligible to be on the list. And if we reduce the number of businesses, we have to reduce the number of organizations.
I know.
So we worked very hard to get three, so that we could have three nonprofits also represented. It's difficult to get the businesses to participate.
I've seen that.
Other comments? Yes?
Well, I just, we had, during our citizen comments, the chamber executive director indicated that it was important, he felt that it was important that all of the committee members be there in person to hear the presentations by the nonprofits for the allocation of funds. Do we have any way to control that?
Well, we don't have a valid meeting if we don't have a representative from that, I would hope.
Well, I guess the contingency, based on your question, is what theoretically, if we only had two businesses attend, but three of the organizations, would we kick one of them out for the meeting that night, for example, to make it an even four as opposed to five?
Well, I think the question is not so much for that evening, but when they, when the committee sits down to actually allocate the funds, everyone should have the same level of understanding of each project. And if you're not there to listen to the presentations, your, you know, your evaluation that may be different than had you been there in person.
I think the mayor has also asked every representative that they attend, or they send someone. In the past, we have let people send in their recommendations, and they may not have been able to attend, but that could be another discussion.
So as the chair, I hope, of the committee, I hope you can herd the cats.
Okay.
Get them all in the room.
Well, some of them don't call back, so they're not on the committee, obviously, but I do have a question perhaps for the treasurer, if he is aware of if we're collecting any funds from Airbnb?
We are not.
We are not? Okay. If we were, would they be going to lodging tax? Do they collect lodging tax with their fees?
I think we'd have to have regulations to, for that, which I don't believe we have any at this time.
I believe other cities may be collecting a lodging tax from their Airbnb remittances. I don't know if that's something that you have to enable, or if it just happens.
I'm not aware that we're collecting any taxes on that.
They would have to have a business license, and then they would report it to the Department of Revenue, but I'm not aware that we have any out there. If you know of anybody, give me a call.
I think we'd take their money, if they want to pay it to us. Other questions, comments? Okay, we'll be voting on the, approving the mayor's recommendation for the appointments to the lodging tax committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to Item 7F, which is the first item that was added to tonight's agenda. It's the purchase of a piece of real estate known as 720 Prospect Street. It's an office building around the corner here from City Hall. This evening, I would be looking for a council member to make a motion authorizing the attorney to prepare a purchase and sale agreement in the amount of $230,000 for the purchase of 720 Prospect Street with the following conditions: satisfaction, with a satisfactory title insurance policy, city's appraisal to support the purchase price, completion of a satisfactory environmental due diligence process, and then additionally, you would need to direct the treasurer to create a budget amendment, and I would believe that a budget amendment should be up to $300,000. We know of $35,000 worth of improvements we need to make to the building, and we would need to buy some furniture and other amenities to make it into an office space, so I think that...
Can we do that as one motion? Mr. Treasurer, do you want a budget amendment, a second?
That would be fine.
Okay, then I would so move for the authorization to move forward with the purchase and sales agreement with the contingencies the mayor cited, as well as asking the treasurer to bring forth the budget amendment for $300,000 for the first reading at the next council meeting.
Are you also authorizing him to sign that agreement?
Oh, why not?
Yes. Well, I guess the conditions are in the agreement.
Conditions are in that. So we have a motion that Mr. Deener seconded, and if I just, for the public's benefit here, council authorized me to negotiate with a property owner who has a building on the market here around the corner from City Hall. We're very overcrowded for space in the planning and engineering department. We've got people in the hallways and closets, and this will be a nice improvement to be able to provide a good work environment for our employees. This isn't a long-term solution to our space needs, but this building should get us easily seven to 10 years down the road in our, in our space needs. So I thank you for your support on this issue. So we will be voting here on a, the purchase of, the purchase and the authorization to purchase, wow, tongue tied here, for the attorney to prepare the purchase and sale agreement on 720 Prospect Avenue for the amount of $230,000. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to consent item 4F, which is now 7G, which is our website, and let me open that up, and I believe that is Clerk Reinerson, and probably a tag team with myself. Clerk Reinerson?
Okay, so the city's current website needs to be updated and made more user-friendly for citizens and staff alike. Therefore, the mayor and staff have identified a company that meets the city's needs in providing hosting for a new city website. At the July 19 work study session, Mayor Pretontu and City Clerk Reinerson demonstrated a test city of Port Orchard website from Proud City. Proud City is a subscription-based software that hosts the city's content on their servers. They will monitor and maintain the security of the city's content, provide analytics of the website for staff to access, the traffic flow of the website to gauge the high interest areas of the website by the public, and is a mobile site compatible. The cost of the subscription is based on the population of the city. The monthly cost is one penny per resident, resulting in a monthly cost of $138.10, or a yearly cost of $1,657.20, and a one-time training, custom integration setup fee of 20 cents per resident, resulting in a cost of $2,762. And the resident population was based off of the numbers that was released from OFM as of April 1, 2016, for the 2015 population. So staff has been provided with a test system that has been set up by, or that has been set up with basic information for the city and staff, has been logging in and making changes, adding pictures, updating content, and getting to know how the system works. It is extremely user-friendly, and Proud City has stated that they are readily available should there be any questions or concerns. Staff followed the procedures outlined in Resolution 009-15 relating to vendors' list for equipment, materials, supplies, or services. Legal counsel has reviewed the contract and has no concerns with the agreement, as it is a typical one for the ones for this kind of service, and is approved as to form. Staff and the mayor, I believe, recommends approving the contract with Proud City as presented.
Motion? Mr. Kachardi?
I move to authorize the mayor to execute the agreements with Proud City for the city's new website hosting and training.
Second.
So, Mr. Clausen?
Just as a comment, this website, I compliment you for finding, and first off, I think this is what we saw at the work study, was very user-friendly, and it seems to be very cost-effective for us to be able to maintain it and make changes to it. But the fact still is that this is a monthly subscription, if you will, so if we find yet a better alternative next month, this is something that we could cancel anytime down the road, so.
We have Janine in the back room there hiding, but she is the, the person that currently does all of the updating to our website, and she's the one that, you know, uploaded most of what you saw on that test site that we put out there, and she's just been thrilled with how easy it is.
With no training at all.
Yeah, she just picked it up and learned it herself.
How long did that take to further, get that content?
Janine, what do you have? About three half-days, maybe?
I'd say about day and a half worth of, full day and a half, yeah. I'm sorry?
How much time have you spent to put, to put all that, what you put on that test site?
I'd say from when I first learned about it, a couple of days, and I was talking with you and Randy, and then we had a conference call, and I think I asked one question of the company, but it's very user-friendly on our end of it to update the information, to gather the information, to make changes. I know all day Thursday, probably most of Friday, I was working on it, and then just as needed, and if anybody requested anything, add pages, we added Employee of the Quarter, I think it was, so just on our end, very easy, they're available our hours if they have questions, or if we have questions, if we have issues, there, there's a live chat portion that we can communicate immediately if needed, or we do a ticket, and they can get back to us within 24 hours.
So to answer your question, that content that was put in there from nothing, about two days, and we believe within three weeks, we should be close to being ready to launch this, you know, so if you planned on a month, I think we could have our new website up and running, and this, this is substantially cheaper than the last repair bill we had on our current, current site, so.
What's the typical cost for a city to put together a website?
We budgeted $40,000 this year to develop a website, this, in our budget, a traditional website.
I'd say that's a whole lot of savings.
It is, so, and the beauty of this, it's off the shelf, it's subscription-based, as Mr. Clausen said. If somebody comes out with something better next week, next month, we can change to that. It's just our staff time to upload, upload the data, pictures, the comments, so please click on that link we emailed to you, play with it a little bit, tell us what you want, and Janine'd be happy to make it happen.
And you said it is mobile-friendly?
Mm-hmm.
That's great.
It out. That's pretty cool.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to get everybody to the ADWC conference next year, because that's where I learned about this.
This is in Tacoma?
It's in Vancouver.
Oh, okay.
So not too far away. So with that, any other questions? Mr. Chang?
I think it sounds like a very user-friendly product, and I would generally support it. However, I am going to vote against this, because I am concerned that we did not put out for bid locally.
Fair enough. Other comments or questions? Okay, we will be voting on the author...
Can I just ask a question? Because I know Mr. Chang said that he's not going to support it because it wasn't put out for bid locally. My question is, did we follow all of the procedures and our policy to select this particular company?
Correct. We have a current resolution that states that anything that's under $7,500 per year, you can seek a bid, and if it fits your needs, you can negotiate a price. So that's what our resolution states, and that's what we followed.
And as I shared with the full council, I did have someone in the soft, in the web development industry present that very question to me, and I share, you saw my comment that I shared with him, that this fit our needs, being off-the-shelf and subscription-based, and if there, and it's a month-to-month service, and if there's anybody in the, you know, local that has a similar product or service, I'd be, love to hear from them, talk to them about it, but I have no knowledge of anything similar to this, that's off the shelf, that could meet our needs, so.
Well, I think the point, too, that it's month-to-month, if we do find somebody local that can provide this or equal, we can switch in a heartbeat. So all of the data that we put into this is we own, so we can take it with us.
And Janine has reached out to a couple of the other cities that have, there's about 10 of them out there that are using this product right now, and they were very happy with, you know, with, with the product, and they've implemented it, so.
Good point.
All right, so once again, we'll be voting on an authorization for the mayor to execute the agreements with Proud City for the city's new website hosting and training. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We have one in opposition. The motion carries. That is the end of our business items. We are on to the report of the council committees. Mr. Clausen, Finance Committee?
Yes, the Finance Committee met this morning. We, as we normally do, went over the sales tax receipts, and I would be happy to report that they continue to come in over budget, and this is a good thing for this one to be over budget. I think the July receipts was about 8.3% greater than we had planned on, so that's a good thing. The real estate excise tax is continuing to come in strong. I think it's a sign of the housing market. The treasurer provided us with a, kind of another format to look at all of our different accounts and how they're, both the revenues coming in, the expenditures going out, and the ending balance for each one, so, kind of like that. The treasurer also gave us kind of an update on where we are with our technology improvements. Apparently, one of the folks that we had hoped to hire changed his mind, was too, no longer interested in this... longer interested in this position, so there's been some things switched around. The consultant that we're using is working with Wave Cable to help provide the connection that we need to the world. So the system that we have here tonight for the wireless, although is working fine, getting out to the world, is still going to be improved at some future date, as soon as they can connect the right tech people together to make this happen, so. From that standpoint, it was great. We also went over some issues that the mayor and staff are having over compensation with the current economy and the job market the way it is. We're having, I won't say it's a tough time, but when we need to hire folks, we're competing with a very, very strong employment market, and we may have to revisit our salary schedule to make some adjustments in that. And we've asked the HR folks to go ahead and present us with a salary schedule that we can look at that is more in line with the current salaries in our market, if you will, and not only looking at cities that are close to us, but also using AWC's information just to make sure that we're kind of in the middle. And that is going to be kind of in preparation for budget development time, so that we have that available for us when we go forward.
I can interject there, too, and that is only for the non-represented employees. We have two bargaining units that are taking care of outside of that.
Thank you. And then we talked briefly with the mayor over the potential inter-local agreement with the Fire District over some of the services that they're currently providing to the city, and the fees that we're currently providing versus what they would like us to provide. So we're still working on that issue. Did I miss anything?
Okay, economic development and tourism?
Yes, we met on Monday, July 18. And many of the things on our agenda, we have moved forward to tonight's meeting, and one was the street use permits, one was the multifamily property tax exemption. We also discussed the bids we received for Wayfinding signs, and I had been anticipating we were going to have a contract tonight.
The company, the person who is supposed to sign was away on a family emergency, it just didn't get done. The attorney's going to work with one of my staff members to get that contract ready for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. The other things we had are ongoing issues, in that we're still putting together our policy for use of our, or the trademark of our Wayfinding logo and draft public events ordinance. Brandy has been working on the draft public events ordinance as long as we were working on the street use permits, so. The other thing that we spent some time talking about was employment centers in retail stores and different combinations of perhaps commercial zones. It was overarching discussion, just throwing some ideas out, and there will be more to come on that. And our next meeting is scheduled for September 12 at 9:00 a.m. We are not going to meet in August unless something comes up. And right now, Brandy, my question is, we have, economic development has brought forth LTAC requests in the past, so are we going to need to meet, to put, when will that, when will we need to have those requests in?
Let's see. So in August, I typically get the treasurer's projection of the revenue. The applications will go out for the public, and we usually keep those open, I think, four weeks, three weeks, after we know the amount.
So do you think we're fine not meeting until September, is my question? Is September 12?
I think it'll be really close.
I think that's late, actually.
Okay, so Economic Development Committee, we may have a brief meeting. We'll discuss it. Have a limited agenda. And that was all?
You guys will get together and figure out that meeting date?
Yeah, we'll get together and figure that out, yeah.
Okay, good idea. Utilities and Sewer Advisory?
The last meeting that we were supposed to have last week was canceled by the Public Works Director for lack of content to discuss, and we're not quite sure about the August meeting. We may, like Economic Development, meet again in September. However, if there's something pressing, it would be August 15, and we'll let you know.
Brandyus?
So we met last week. I don't have a report prepared. And I don't have a report prepared. And I don't know if we're going to be meeting the third Wednesday in August, that remains to be seen.
We'll look to hear from you at the next council meeting.
Yes.
Lodging tax, you have a committee?
Nothing to report yet.
Okay. Festival of Chimes and Lights?
Well, first, I'm going to go back to Sewer Advisory.
Okay.
We met July 20, and we met at the sewer plant, and we had a tour of the site, and learned a few things about the improvements that have been taking place. The deck coatings, which were a big deal, have been completed, the storage building, where that's going to be, the hydraulic modeling, and as usual, we talked about the bio solids study, and if it's worth going to the Class A, the grade A bio solids, am I saying that correctly, as opposed to grade B, and the cost involved. So that discussion has been ongoing. Our next meeting is going to be October 19, and that will be at the West Sound Utility District Conference Room.
I can assure you that Class A versus Class B's been discussed for at least 10 years.
It always is, but it's interesting, isn't it?
Not really.
Talked about pellet size?
It's expensive to produce Class A.
It's expensive. Chimes and Lights?
The Festival of Chimes and Lights meeting was also canceled. We were going to be looking at the tree and working on the garland, however, Bill was sick, and so we weren't able to have that meeting. We will not have a regular meeting this month, but we will still try to get together and deal with the tree and the garland issue.
All right. Yes, Mr. Clausen?
I had forgotten one thing from the Finance Committee. As the Chair of the Finance Committee, I sat down in my seat here tonight, and there has been a quarter sitting here for the entire meeting without anyone claiming ownership, so I would like to turn this over to the City Treasurer, so that he can put this as part of the city funds.
Everything else?
I know, that's why I'm giving it over to you.
Wow. On to the report of the mayor. I'd just like to speak to the quality of the people that we've been hiring, and...
Well, thank you.
You were elected, but... But you're a quality person, too. So, you know, years ago, our practice was, we hired folks to entry-level positions and trained them up, and people, and that still works, but some of the folks, in particular in Public Works that we've been hiring, we've been hiring with skill sets that have really raised our game here at the city. We've got a journeyman electrician on staff, we've got an equipment, a trained equipment operator now, and we recently, now, we had the unfortunate benefit of having Highway 166 closed. So we didn't, when we did this project, we didn't have to have flagging and traffic control, which would have cost about $15,000. But three years ago, we ditched, we cleaned up the ditches on Highway 166, and we went with low bid, because we didn't have the ability to do that ourselves, and it cost us $117,000. And our Public Works staff recently did that same project ourselves for $9,000.
Oh, wow.
I think that's huge, and hats off to Thomas Hunter and that group of individuals, because I think that's really impressive. On to other projects going on around town. If you haven't noticed, they're moving a lot of dirt at the St. Vincent de Paul site. Mr. Titus came to the rescue again. They were short $28,000 of their permits, and I was at a meeting with him and Mr. Chu last Friday, and he handed him a check and took care of it. So they have, all of their permits have been paid for now. We hope not to have any more slowdowns in that process, because it's really important that they get their facility built to get our pedestrian pathway started on time, and Mr. Titus's new project going on time. So the activity you're seeing down at the Titus site is environmental cleanup, it has nothing to do with his site development activities, so that's what you're seeing there. To Cal Pier, Mr. Martin and I watched sections of our dock being loaded, old dock, being loaded onto trucks yesterday, as the barge pulled in. You should be seeing piles being driven in the water out there in the coming days later this week.
Will we hear them, too?
Yes.
What's that?
Will we hear them, too?
You probably will hear them, too, if you're home, but I don't believe that work will be done at night, so it shouldn't be too disruptive. We had KPUD, Kitsap Public Utility District, come to our work, one of our committee meetings here a while back. I've met with Bob Hunter, he's going to come back and meet with us again. But one of the things from my meeting is, they provided undergrounding specs to us that will be part of our development standards going forward, so that we can get fiber conduit whenever there's a ditch opened, and they will be invited to all future pre-construction meetings, when the city holds them, to make sure that their interests are being represented. So we have this building downtown that used to be a restaurant called Myrie's, and I think part of the Port Orchard positive movement here is, going forward, we should refer to it as 737 Bay Street, because that's the address. And I did speak with Mansour again today about that and the contractor, and, long story short, contractor was finally given all of the necessary approvals to move forward. Unfortunately, though, he has mobilized on another job site, so it's probably about another week and a half till he finishes that job, but he assured me he will bring a large crew and knock that out fairly quickly once they get back on-site, so hopefully there's no more surprises there. In my conversations with him, too, though, we have a, he's negotiating with a potential restaurant for the old bakery building, so hopefully that comes together. They're doing their due diligence, and I know they were meeting with a contractor tonight, and been talking to him also about the pavilion and a potential tenant for the pavilion, too, and someone to manage it for an event center, so I hope that comes together. Lastly, I have, and we don't have to handle this tonight, myself and the mayor pro tem will be out of town on September 13. So one of the things that came up during our Department Emergency Management Ordinance discussion, we had, we probably need a hierarchy to this, and at a minimum, though, we need a mayor pro tem pro tem, I think, or something for, and I think you, as the body, need to handle that, maybe at the next meeting, and elect whoever that's going to be, because Mr. Clausen won't be at the meeting to be able to conduct the meeting that evening. So that's all I have.
Would that require any changes to just kind of the definition of governance?
No, it's just somebody to chair the meeting that night.
The immediate concern is, yes, addressing the...
If we bring this up next week, they don't have to do any work between now and then to provide language.
The body can decide who's going to chair the meeting in the absence, so.
But I think we brought up some very good discussion, though, the other week, that in a natural disaster, since many of us live within a few blocks here, if we all became part of the new waterfront, and did, and make it through that event, who's in charge? And declares that disaster. So we should probably have somewhat of a hierarchy, and it was a very good discussion we had. So that's all I have this evening. We are on to our second citizens' comment period. Mr. Grogan, I think you wanted to share something with you, and thank you for being patient this evening.
I did. Stuart Grogan, I'm Executive Director of Housing, Kitsap, 3, 4, 5, 6th Street in Bremerton. And on this last Saturday, July 23, we had an extraordinary event at one of our projects up off of Lippert, the Heritage Project, and it was an extraordinary event. And I wanted to express my very great gratitude to you and to, especially to Chief Marty and to Officer Janet Dec and to Sergeant Maine for an extraordinary effort. There were police cars, there were officers, there were balloons and banners, there was bicycle decorations, there were tattoos, and there was food, and there was a parade of kids and families moving all around the side. And in today's world, where that kind of relationship is so important to build, it was a really extraordinary effort on the part of the chief, for which we are enormously grateful. I wanted to share just a quick couple of lines from an email that the mayor has as a member of our board, which I hope he'll share with you, but this is our Director of the Real Estate Program writing for, and quoting, "For nearly all of my adult life, I've worked in affordable housing, and have never seen this kind of support and camaraderie from local authorities. I was truly moved to see how invested our local authorities are in our property, our residents, and in the mission. This is a perfect example of what it takes for a healthy community to grow and prosper." It's a really extraordinary thing. And so, again, my very sincere thanks to Chief Marty and to the City of Port Orchard for that contribution to our work. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Other comments this evening? Mr. Whittleton?
The city's new Wi-Fi, can you please make it old fat guy friendly? I can't figure it out. I guess I'll have stock and talk events.
Actually, stop. Brandy can help you.
You can help?
I can try.
We'll try.
Oh, it's turned off.
We're happy to help, if we can.
There we go.
I thought I was the only old fat guy that did help.
Old friend, fat guy friendly. You know, I had a comment about my tree, and now I have a concern that if my tree is found to be a nuisance, and I have a grievance, I can take it to the guy that tells, that says that it's a problem for free. And when he says, "No, I'm right," then it costs me 400 bucks to have somebody else decide, that doesn't seem right. There's got to be independent, and not at my expense, to protect my property. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Don't tell me you got it that fast.
Yes, cheer him.
I did.
I've been thinking about the people that are being booted off the waterfront, and I could see that a park would be nice, or a larger park down there. But I also see that I never heard one of you say anything about increasing a commuter's day by probably over an hour, as far as now, they drive to a parking lot, they have to wait for the bus to come through, then they ride it downtown, then they go on with their commute, either to the Navy Yard or someplace in Bremerton, or onto the Seattle Ferry, and then come back, and the same thing. And then I got to thinking, well, if I had a car in a parking lot, and I'm relying on the bus service again, if it were here in the parking lot, I might stop at the Mexican restaurant, have a drink, or have dinner, or I might stop Jamie's or Moon Dog's or something, but now I'm relying on that bus, and I'm going to hop on that bus and head up to the parking, so I'm taking business away from downtown. And it's just something that went through my head on that part. And another thing on the parking, and I think Brandy said that it might be addressed in the new parking permits for on the street, but my neighbor was talking, as I started to say earlier, at a party, she has a babysitter come in once a week on a Thursday, and she has been running down and paying $10 to get a parking permit for that person for one day each week, and it's been quite, she wasn't real happy about the inconvenience and the cost that is costing her for that parking permit. And so someplace in your ordinance, you should have something for those of us that live there, and have somebody who comes, say, if I could afford a housekeeper, and that person is parked on the street to clean my house, you know, am I going to have to pay $10 every... pay $10 every week for that person to be able to come to my place and work there, like she's having a babysitter come in? So, those are things that have been going through my head.
Do you have your comments? Mr. Clausen, how long's the average bus ride from the waterfront to the, I know I'm putting you on the spot.
The Armory Park and Ride is stretching at 10 minutes.
And the bus runs every half-hour with the same as the foot ferry?
The one from the Park and Ride at On Mitchell is every half an hour.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Mr. Chang, Mr. Chang has something for the good of the order.
I just had a good of the order that apparently next Tuesday is National Night Out here in Port Orchard. Can you guys put something on the website about it? Or did you already? I wasn't able to find it. It's from 5:30 to 8:30 across City Hall and the waterfront.
Right over here at the boat launch.
Ask Janet Dec. Yep.
I think the event organizer's been out of town for the last week or so, so I will connect with the police department, see if I can get some language to put up there.
We'll get something out there, yes. Good, big event. We want to have people there.
Real quick, the Development Regulations Ad-Hoc Committee was canceled because the attorney had a pressing issue and wasn't able to get to the work. Nick, do you have a new date for that?
Yes. Carrie is sending out a notice. We were going over the dates today, and so it should be out in the next day or two. And I think she also picked a September date as well.
September?
It'll be August and September, so we've got two meetings that we're scheduling.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Clausen?
I'd like to congratulate Port Orchard. As of April 1st, 2016, in a document sent by our Clerk Ryanerson, our population increased. We are now 13,810 by 2%. Congratulations.
Yes, Mr. Clausen?
You know, I very much appreciated your comment about the staff, and I wanted to share my observation. And at the last work study, the presentation we had on Well 13, I thought was very well done. It was very well presented, and it was all done with our staff. So, I think that's another example of having quality staff.
I'm very proud of the folks we have here. So, that meeting is adjourned. Thank you.